I would like to call the February 12th, 2019 meeting of the College Place City Council to order. If we could all please for our pledge of allegiance, Ms. Sherman, would you lead our pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nyhagen would like to do our invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're saddened tonight by the loss of one of our members. We loved him dearly and he did a fine job for his city. We ask that you would bless his family as they grieve. Bless our meeting tonight and help us to do the work of the city according to your will, we ask, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
It's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on matters not on the agenda, would you please step forward and state your name and address? Seeing none, before us is our consent agenda. I would like to make one change to this evening's agenda, and that is I'd like to add an informational or administrative report in this to discuss the replacement of Councilmember Dickerson and how to go forward with some other issues surrounding that.
Do you want to add that where?
On our administrative reports, there'd be item 6.05.
Okay, here we go.
So with that, our consent agenda is approved in this evening's agenda with that one change. Council minutes from January 22nd, council workshop from February 5th, our emergency medical services contract for the 2019 EMS levy, a contract assignment and claims agreement between the City of College Place and Scout Lake Construction that was discussed at our workshop, and amendments to the 2017 to 2026 strategic plan, and the check register and financials.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
There's a move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Cleveland. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I would like to recognize we do have a distinguished visitor with us this evening. One of our county councils here this evening. Thank you for coming, sir, and we welcome you.
Todd Kimble.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Todd, it's Todd Kimble. So, moving on to action items. Mr. Gordon, request for proposals for inspection services.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a matter of the council as seen before. We have in our fee schedule, if you look at exhibit 1, a 5% project cost that we can levy on projects for special inspection regarding utilities, drainage control, facilities, spokes, streets, and so forth. What this is primarily used for is, or the intent was, to use this for situations where we ran into special circumstances in the field where our public works folks are out there inspecting and they need some assistance. It may take way much more time, or maybe there's some special issues like spokes or stormwater or so forth that we need some help on. So, we had this in the fee schedule, but we have really no way to actually bring somebody in to give us the special inspection services. So what this does is allows us to go out for an RFP to establish a roster of firms that comply with service for us under this fee schedule. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Gordon. Ms. Selby.
So, we need to establish our own roster. There's not a GA roster for inspection services.
We can go out on a roster, like with, well, MRSI has one, on a case-by-case basis. But what we prefer to do is have five or six local firms that are available that we can discuss.
Other questions for Mr. Gordon?
I'm sorry, I think you alluded to this. This 5% add-on, or this amount, was this, is this a new fee, or was this something, this is an existing fee in the past?
This has been on the books for years. We just have never used it. But we've got to a point where our resources are stretched pretty thin, and it makes sense for now, especially when we get some special circumstances, like the spook issues and probably areas where we might need assistance.
And that was kind of my question. This has never been used in the past, so there's no, as it expresses here, it's a pass-through in the future. It'll be, yeah. But if it has not been used, my question was, it's not a net-net negative. In other words, if the staff is performing it historically, we're not foregoing this offset to expenses. This is a new amount that will be implemented.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Gordon? Ms. Selby.
I guess I do have a question. So would developers, in many circumstances, be able to choose whether they wanted to wait longer or whether they wanted to pay the 5%? Or...
With regard to...
Well, I'm just wondering, can they use this to say, hey, I'll pay the 5% so we can get faster inspections if you guys are backed up? Or is it only for times when there's special...
This is really something that we would make the call on. We might consider that if there were a situation where we are strained so thin, it might be an option in place for that. Might have to consider that. It might be something.
I know some cities do that, and some developers want to wait, and some are happy paying.
Yeah, right, right, right. And this does help us in terms of if we're just over, under resourced, we'll be having that at the time, so that'd be an option.
Other questions? Is there a motion? Ms. Selby.
I would move that we approve going out to, approve advertising for an RFP for project inspection services.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You're not off the hook yet, Mr. Gordon. Abbreviated stormwater plat option.
Yes, thank you. This is another idea we saw at last council, and as an administrative report, we're trying to provide a little additional flexibility for our designers when it comes to storm. As you know, we're going through the stormwater utility, getting that up and going. We have stormwater standards that have been approved, but as we've been going along, what we've been trying to do is be very careful about who stormwater suits. We want to make sure that, under the MPDS, that we don't bite off more than we have to in terms of management requirements. So we want to make sure in our stormwater utility that we are only addressing stormwater that flows to our right-of-way. That said, we've taken an approach that effectively takes as much as we can into the right-of-way so we can take care of that as a public service for our residents. There are cases, though, however, where lots fall off to the south or to the lower elevation, and they actually can't flow to the right-of-way, and we can't take the water and take care of it. And so this particular standard allows a firm designer to address that fairly simply in an abbreviated way. It's just one more way, now it won't be detailed, one more way for them to address stormwater. It effectively allows them to simplify their process and have an engineer come out after they're done and make sure that when the lot is in place, that it's consistent with their design and be approved. So they don't have to go through this effort, but it's just one more approach to complying with stormwater on the lot. I know that sounds confusing, because stormwater is generally confusing.
Questions for Mr. Gordon on stormwater. Mr. Peterson.
I'd move to approve resolution number 19-007, adding additional option for stormwater system design.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Rizzatello, memorandum of understanding with the property owners for Southwest Sewer Trunk Line.
Thank you. I agree with the man. So, we noted this at the council workshop the previous week, but this just sets forth terms and conditions for what I would like to call Phase 1 of the Southwest Sanitary Sewer Trunk Line. So just as a refresher, for future development in these areas here, so Commercial Drive, Country Estates, Nap Edition, Harvest Meadows, and Meadow Brook, we need additional capacity to move wastewater from that area to the treatment plant, which is over here. Additionally, an area that was annexed last year, the Mike McKernan and Craig Christiansen site, it also needs the trunk line, and is one of the few remaining areas where there's something that can be used for commercial. So in this memorandum of understanding, it just says they have a, we would pay for engineering and then the site, the land cost to site a lift station, because we need a bigger lift station to take offline, an undersized one here. And then whatever the engineering report says, the right-of-way we would need would be given to us free of charge, and then we would work cooperatively with them on the construction phase, because there's several options here. One is if we built it and then on any new development essentially charged the various connection fees and lift station costs. Another option is if a contractor comes in and wants to save costs and then build it, and there can be some reductions taken into account as well. So I envision after we get to engineering, pass engineering and move to the construction phase, there will be a second, a random of understanding to encapsulate what that construction phase looks like. The two property owners here signed off on this, because I wanted to memorialize any development that goes on out there they have to connect to this thing. This also went through the Economic Development Commission, and they signed on as well. Daryl, who's the chair, signed the recommendation, so therefore it's in front of you right now, and this is also in the capital disassembly plan that was adopted by council back in December.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello. Unfortunately, everything flows downhill.
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland.
I'll motion to adopt resolution number 19-008, which authorizes the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding pertaining to the engineering phase of the Southwest wastewater sewer line project with Mr. McKernan and Mr. Christiansen.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Rizzatello. Moving right along, Mr. Hartwig, sewer lift station pump purchase.
Our Holstead lift station, we had an alarm, probably not a week ago, week and a half ago, a capital C failure on the pump. It's a submersible pump, and lift stations have two pumps, okay? We are now down to one pump, and this is making me more aware that we need to have a backup pump as well. We've taken it, the Jacobs took the pump to HN, they tore it down, looked at it, they said it would cost more to repair it than to buy a new one. That really surprised me, so I'm getting a second opinion, and the people that hold our well number three pump is taking it down to Twin Falls to have evaluated by them. The other thing I want to specifically find out is if there was damage by construction-related activities. If it is, I want to, I want to find out, and I want to go back on the contractor as well. But anyway, that's just a brief history. So, we're at a point where pumps take a long time, new ones take a significant amount of time, eight to 12 to 16 weeks to get. They're not on the shelf. And so I'm asked, what I'd like to do is see if you would approve the purchase of a pump. I cannot give you the brand or anything right now. We're still investigating which ones can get here faster, which ones meet the spec. I do have a lead from a supplier that supplies submersible pumps that Wal-Wal is using, and most of the Tri-Cities are using. They had to order it, and then that order failed to process, but they still have to buy the pump. So those are supposed to be here on Thursday. So, that may work, we're trying to figure that out, but I'd like to at least get your authorization to purchase a new pump. Just to, for consideration, and I don't say this lightly, but if that pump does come back with a second report that says it's not worth fixing, then we're back down to getting one pump, and we're back down to not having a backup. If you are so inclined, and the pump that's available here later this week, they have three of them. If you're so inclined to have a backup pump, if you want to give me the authorization right now to get two pumps if we need it, that would be great, and we can, we can rest assured that we have a backup. Otherwise, just give me the authorization to buy one, I would appreciate it.
Questions for Mr. Hartwig. Let's start with Ms. Nyhagen, then...
So if we went ahead and to authorize the two, what would be the cost then? What would we...
I'd go for $54,000.
Double, double, pardon me?
I would go for $54,000.
Double or nothing.
And that's only if that one would pay, then we're not repairable.
Okay. So, not budgeted? And this money is then coming from where?
Sarah, can you tell me where, what fund this is coming from?
From Fund 411, which is the Big Fire Castle Fund, and there was some money budgeted in order for just general equipment that was kind of unspecified, so it would come out of that.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Hartwig? Ms. Selby.
Well, one question was actually, Sarah. So, how much money is in that budget later on?
It's several hundred thousand.
Okay, so it's more than $54,000?
Yeah.
Ms. Cleveland.
This backup pump, is this, would this essentially sit on a shelf waiting to be used and installed? So it could be used for other potential failures as well, or is it specific to this?
It'd be pretty much specific to this. This is, this was designed specifically for this operation, and so it's a...
I was thinking like other lift stations.
No.
No, okay.
No, it's particular to this one.
How common are failures of the pumps?
Oh, I'm really surprised that this would fail, and that concerns me, that it failed to where they think it needs to be just replaced. And I did have, I mean, I had the contract, part of the contract with Holstead is that they install sewer mains, and then they have to have them TV and, or video inspected. And when I was out there during construction, I noticed a lot of debris going in that sewer main that wasn't supposed to, and so I required them to jet and clean the line as well. I talked with the company that did that, and they said down at the end, before it goes into the lift station and a manhole there, they found a lot of large rocks. That concerns me, that that could have been a cause of damage, because the HN Electric was looking at the impeller, and why they would be looking at impeller on a seal failure is beyond me. So it makes me wonder if it got damaged. That's my concern.
And an impeller is?
Impeller is the spinning mechanism that transmits the fluid out of the web link.
Ms. Sherman, you got another question?
Oh, I was just going to say, I like the idea of getting two if needed.
So should we make it two here with the motion?
That would be appropriate.
Up to two? Yeah. Oh, sure, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of up to two sewer submersible pump motor, pump motors for lift station number three not to exceed $54,000, or do you need two separate?
Yeah, $54,000.
Does it need to be separate in the minutes, or is that good?
No.
Okay, up to $54,000.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, keeping in mind that things continue to run downhill.
And I do want to, I do want to apologize for the late addition there, our request, but we just found out that that, that one company said it wasn't repairable, and so I just needed a backup.
Seems like good timing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Mr. Ricard, Lyons Park renovation, Sherwood Trust man.
Thank you. So, we have a pending grant still with our CO for $500,000 that would help fund a portion of this roughly $1.3 million project for renovating the Quonase Park. We're obviously seeking other sources of revenue, and the Sherwood Trust has a grant opportunity here at the end of the month, and so we're requesting that you authorize us to apply for that grant in the amount of roughly $260,000. And that would, that would help us with our match portion of the Quonase Park, Lyons Park project, which is roughly $100,000.
We do have a member of the public who would like to speak to the council on the issue. Would you please step forward and state your name and address?
Thank you. Jennifer Demont, age 27, Southeast Century Drive. I live in Garrison Creek Heights, which is a very short walk to Lyons Park, and I come to you tonight really speaking as a parent, a grandparent, a certified earthquake regulations specialist, and a longstanding member of the National Recreation Park Association. I do not currently allow my seven-year-old and one-year-old grandchildren to visit Lyons Park for fear of their safety. I have submitted a letter of support to the Sherwood Trust grant applications and really want to compel the city to really look carefully at the safety of Lyons Park. I have a 16-year history as a pediatric trauma specialist at Harvard Medical Center. And included in that experience is a lifelong memory of a father bearing burden of a child with a lifelong and severe traumatic brain injury sustained on a playground. Those of you who may have not visited Lyons Park should do so. There are currently exposed concrete footings on the swing set structure. The National Recreation Park Association has developed playground safety guidelines that have been in place for many, many, many years. I am not currently a certified playground safety inspector, but would be happy to provide the playground safety checklist for review. I'm delighted to see a proposal to enhance Lyons Park, but really would also compel the city, in the meantime, prior to this project being able to be implemented, to close the current swing set facility in particular. The exposed concrete footings pose an imminent, imminent threat of traumatic brain injury. There are safety structures that are, that include a fall zone, one of the criteria of the National Recreation Park Association playground safety requirements includes a soft fall area, so if a child were to fall off a swing or come at the landing zone of the slide, there would be a safe surface on which that child could fall. Those criteria are not currently met at Lyons Park, and I really compel the city to look at safety mitigation for the playground that's currently available for Lyons Park as funding is sought for renovations of Lyons Park. It is a grave concern to me as a grandparent of children who also are residents of College Place, that the current structure is imminently unsafe, and I voice my full support behind solicitation of funding to improve the safety and renovation of Lyons Park. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Demont. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ricard? Mr. Peterson.
I've just moved to approve resolution number 19-009, authorizing staff to seek grant funding through the Sherwood Trust.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ricard and Ms. Demont. Ms. Kilgore, street sweeper bond ordinance, bond purchase agreement and creation of stormwater debt service fund number 414.
So, I am bringing before you this evening an agenda item to formally give authorization to issue the bond for our street sweeper. So included in this would be the approval of an ordinance, approval of the bond purchase agreement, which contains all of the terms that the bank has set forth for us, and also the creation of Fund 414, which would be the stormwater debt service fund. Just as a note, I had estimated the cost of financing initially over the life of the loan to be a little over $32,000, and when it was all said and done and the amortization schedule was run by the attorneys and everything, it came in at just under $27,000, so that was a good thing. Do you guys have any questions about the financing until, or...
Questions for Ms. Kilgore.
This would be issued prior to the end of the month, and you would go ahead and move forward with how is the item, which is next?
Seeing no questions, is there a motion? Ms. Selby.
I think we approve ordinance number 19-006 for the issuance of 2019 LTGO bonds in the amount of $270,000, and the creation of stormwater debt service fund number 414.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. Mr. Hartwig, purchase of a Timco sweeper. This is to keep things running downhill.
Do we get to drive it when it's...
What?
Do we get to drive it when it's like that?
Well, that's up to you.
Our existing, existing sweeper is a 2001 Timco. It's been, as you can see on the agenda bill, it's reached its useful life. It's had several major repairs over its life. Pickup head's been rebuilt every three, four years. The hopper has been had a total rebuild. Fan has been replaced, and they're all coming due again. The new improvement, the new sweeper that we are suggesting and asking for to purchase has several improvements to assist the wear and so forth. So we went and looked on state bid, and we looked on a purchasing cooperative that we were a member of. You see the two contracts in front of you, the HGAC Buy contract for the same equipment, same, same piece of equipment is about $6,000 to $7,000 cheaper. We would recommend authorization to purchase a sweeper through HGAC Buy.
And you want to surplus the...
Yeah, yes, we want a surplus, please.
Is there any, is there any residual value in the surplus?
Probably not. The, probably the way we might get the most is if there is a smaller city that wants to try to get it, we might get more from them. But I would not, I would tell them the truth.
Shame on you, Mr. Hartwig.
Very noble of you, Mr. Hartwig, for what you meant to say.
Any questions for Mr. Hartwig?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of Timco sweeper through HGAC Buy for an amount not to exceed $280,000, and approve the surplus on this, one the city currently has.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig.
Get it going.
Thank you. Moving on to administrative reports. Chief Tamaris, approval received Department of Justice Criminal History Grant for electronic latent prints.
He's gonna think I'm a retardess. S Y I. I gotta go.
Attorney will defend you.
My lucky night. Oh, 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 man.
That's so nice.
So, wow, for those of you who don't know, College Place is a very safe place to live only if you lock your garage doors.
Twice.
And due to diligence on the part of Chief Tamaris and the staff.
I'll give you the backstory later.
I was just, just real quickly, I was speaking to someone, there's pictures of me at the age of, born here in Lawall, in the valley, moved to Bozeman for a few years when I was, you know, two, well, I didn't move, my parents moved there. And there's pictures of me at the age of two, out in the front lawn with this as a gift on a birthday in Bozeman, Montana. And this was handmade, a friend of the family that had, and just recently I picked this up and hope to pass it on to grandchildren someday. And so it's, it's of no dollar value, but of course it has an emotional value that can't be probably measured. But thank you so much, everyone that was involved, and I appreciate it.
To lock that up.
I will heat your advice.
Chief Tamaris?
All right, back to business. All right, so due to the diligence and hard work of our supervising court, Karen Barre, we talked about getting an updated fingerprint machine because we're still doing paper and ink. And we're the only agency in the valley still doing paper ink, everybody else is doing electronically. So she found a grant, she applied for the grant, and she was awarded the grant.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting. It's $11,290 grant. We do have a matching, a 10% matching fund grant to the grant, rather. And this would be great because, as I said, currently we're the only agency still using ink and paper system. The grant will allow us to incorporate technology to provide a more accurate and timely product which better serves our customers and the city of College Place. So if you don't know what that is, if people come in to get their criminal history checks for job, law enforcement, government jobs, criminal processing, teachers, concealed weapons permits, post office, any federal jobs, they have to come in and get fingerprinted. So this scanning machine will do it electronically. And a lot of times the paper and ink system, you turn it in and it's not good, so you have to call them back to get it renewed. The electronic system works automatically. So it's a really, really exciting piece of technology. We're trying to embrace technology and help us do our jobs better. We would like you to authorize that, that we receive that and authorize the purchase of the damage matching grant.
Why aren't we doing that right now?
Well, it, it, it didn't get there. We, we don't have a, a resolution to do that, but we can make that happen next time. Mr. Gordon, engineering staffing assistants.
Mr. Mayor, this is Newland, and just a quick administrative report. Been scratching our heads a little bit. This next year we have a busy year ahead of us and a lot of capital projects and so forth. Mike and I have talked a little bit about how do we make sure that we maintain our development service on the development side as well. So, good idea. And I kind of want to run it by Councilor C. Get your input. We have a current contract with SafeBuild Washington, which does planner reviews and so forth. And the concept is, would be possible, if you folks be open to us working through our existing contract to obtain their services, to take a look at some planner reviews and development services and so forth, and retain them this year and see how it goes. This is just a request to see if there's any interest in that. It would provide a little relief on the development side. The scope could be scaled depending upon cost. If it looked like it really worked and if it looked like we wanted to continue to forward, we could possibly look at what we're doing in terms of fees, schedules, and the asset charges and so forth. But for right now, the idea would be just to take a look at it, start the engagement, the conversation with them and see what it costs, what, what kind of terms they give or require. Mr. Mayor, is this something that council may be interested in taking?
Ms. Selby?
I'm a little confused about the, about what's in the current contract and what we need to talk to them about, because it sounds like they're the same thing.
It's just augmentation of the, so the contract was adopted last year as strictly just had to do with plan review, but they also do the engineering side of things. And the idea is to basically scope creep out the contract, which it allows for, to do the engineering mainly because our capacity is starting to be challenged with Two Wells, C Street, Lambeth, the Southwest Trunk. We're starting to have issues. We're trying to manage all that successfully, plus we're getting a lot of development in at the same time. It's causing issues.
Okay, so this would really be an expansion of the contract?
Yeah, exactly.
Listen, that is great saying directly from a choke point.
You just say it, say it in like four paragraphs.
Ms. Selby?
So have yous been using them for plan review and are we happy with what they're doing?
I'm going to have to let Mike speak about it. I've been involved with that contract. I believe the building department has used it in the past, but not so much recently.
Yeah, not, not recently because when we shuffle around staff and build another plan and just from the efficiency standpoint, they've got their point of view in either way because I try to keep all money in-house if we can. But when we were using, they were doing a good job, so I wouldn't see an, an issue with it. This seems to be the easiest extension.
More questions for Mr. Gordon?
To me, that makes, it makes sense to me to extend the contract rather than, I'm going to start over with our.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Financial guarantees.
Yes, at least if you wouldn't mind giving up the call point. Okay, so back on August 28th, we brought to you some, I brought to council some information and some requests to take a look at development, financial, I'm sorry, financial guarantees for development. And council instructed us at that time to come back with a proposal for how to manage financial guarantees for developments. So what that means is when they go through the final plant process, we'll walk that process, build the right plant as you're aware, they do the capital improvements, and then they sell lots, and then they make some money and so forth. Well, they can financially guarantee some of those improvements so they can sell lots in advance. And some of the issues that come out of that are, is the plant really ready for use? Are all the improvements constructed to a point where they're safe and secure? And so there's some, there's some issues related to that, so we came back. And part of the issue is whether or not here is, the plant's been cleaned up, whether it's been maintained. And so normally, the knowledge will bond all of that effort. But then if we call their bond, we're talking about a lot of money and a huge impact to their business. I don't recall this conversation. So we ask, maybe we use 25% of that, set it aside, and then we can use some of those monies to say, clean up the roads, take care of brush, so forth and so on. Concern that came from council, it's a good concern, it's legitimate, is on a large project, that's a ton of change, 25%, okay, because we bonded about 125%. So we went back and looked at that. This presentation addresses that with another concept maybe you folks may want to entertain, and so we'll be asking whether you're open to moving forward in this direction instead. Cash flow and financial guarantees for residential plans. We're talking about just residential plans tonight. We may accept, it's presumed that everything can be bonded, but that's not necessarily the case. That is an option. That's at our discretion whether or not we will accept a financial guarantee for these plans. It's in our favor to do so, to encourage development, but it's not a requirement. Since no lots can be sold until the final plant, developers often bond the infrastructure to sell lots to payment bonds to complete the improvements instead of funding the cost for continuing the loan. It's a cash flow issue. If I can sell lots, I can take that money, complete my improvements, right? And you look at the dollar, the dollar amounts associated with that, it's usually the prime rate plus about 2% is what their loan costs are. So say maybe 5% to 6%, depending upon what the prime is right now. Versus they can bond those improvements at half of 2% plus city staff effort in managing that effort. So it's a lot cheaper and more beneficial for a developer to go through this process of bonding. That means they get money available, they can, they can sell lots, take that money from those lots and make the improvements, right? So in fact, we're helping with their cash flow. So it's a benefit to that development. Just a little bit of the background. So the four challenges of financially guaranteeing a plant before it's actually finished. In other words, they can sell lots, right? And in some cases, they can develop the lots, put buildings on it, and people can move in. Some of the challenges of doing that, because versus the other case where you do the whole improvement, get everything done, everything's finished, and then they sell lots, okay? So, so jumping ahead with a financial guarantee is effectively what they're doing, is sometimes you don't get that flat finished, right? It sits there, things don't get done, they're selling homes, it takes much longer to get through that process. Part of the problem too is that if we do allow them to sell lots and build homes on it and the roads aren't done, you have a level of service issue, right? You got to ground the roads, it's not as nice, you may have, you may have, again, a notch of squeeds out there, you may not have all of your stormwater in and so forth. The other thing that's a problem is that the financial guarantees do put a burden on the city staff, because we've got to manage that process as we go through it. Typically, a developer will ask for a partial bond release, since he bonded this whole thing, I want you to release funds for the slopes or for the sidewalks before, because I'm done with that part. So we got to go out, we got to review every single time that goes, goes that process. So there's an impact to our staff. And then the other part of the financial guarantee is, through that process, we still want to be developer friendly, right? That was a concern we had last time, a 25% cash deposit somewhere is not so developer friendly. That's a lot of money for, say, a hundred, a million dollar project, that's a bunch of, that's a ton of change, okay? So, history today, we brought you those, so options on August 28th. We decided, and we're directed to provide an approach. We brought that approach to you on the 11, 9/11, and we ended up requiring that 25% guarantee in cash, okay? There was concern expressed about that impact of that 25% guarantee. And it, it was intended to, I'm just repeating what I mentioned earlier, to provide a bill of assurance, making sure enough completion of minor items without calling it full on. But the reality is, say for a $200,000 deposit would be required for an $800,000 bond. That's similar to what we're looking at on Phase 3D for Homestead. It's a lot of money, okay, sitting around. So we presume that that went through a lot of effort of interviewing folks, that that was going to be considered burdensome from their point of view, okay? It primarily addresses impacts to existing residences, this approach, but it does not necessarily address timely completion. So what we did is went back and looked at the options we presented before. We have took four different cities, Kenwitz option is they have to complete all streets within two years, and they hold that security for up to two years. We have the Pasco option, I'll talk about that a little bit later, the Brideland option and the City of Lawall option. This Pasco option is especially attractive, as we take a look at it again. They require a financial guarantee of 20, 125% like we do, but there's really no schedule. They just don't let anybody move in until it's all done, okay? So that allows the developer to go out and do all his financial guarantees, get everything built, sell lots, make sure his cash flow works, and nobody moves in until everything's done. That's kind of their approach. Okay, this is just their code here. No occupancy permit for a structure other than a temporary contractor's office or temporary storage building shall be issued for a structure on a lot or parcel within an approved subdivision prior to final inspection approval of all required construction permits which serve such lots, okay? So I've spoken to Troy Hendren, who is their inspection services manager of Pasco, and I asked him, does this work? And he says, yeah, it does. It works really well. So they, they accept a financial guarantee again, but they don't allow those certificates of occupancies to be issued. Lots are sold, houses are built, but people cannot move in until everything's done. That's kind of how they're approaching. So does this, does this result in timely completion? Yes, it does. There's a real incentive for a developer to get down. Does it minimize impact to existing residences and phases during development? Yes, because they can't be there until it's done. It takes care of that issue altogether. Does it reduce impact to our city services? Yes, and I'll show you that in a minute, how we're planning to do that. And as a developer, cash flow friendly? Yes, they can sell other lots, get the money they need, complete the project, okay? They just can't get the folks to move in until they're done. So the downside is that, end of this process, as we go through it, as we get to the end, everybody's going to be wanting to move in, that's going to put a lot of pressure on us. We just have to be aware of that, okay? That's just one of the downsides of this approach. And based upon looking at all the ups and downs, I think this is something that, well, I think we can accept that, given the other advantages. So if we're to adopt this Pasco option to our circumstances, here's what I would recommend, is that we would apply it only to residential flats, okay? So that we can, on flats that have commercial elements to them, we can do the more, which I say, forgiving bonding approach, where we allow them to do certain things ahead of time, give them a little bit more flexibility. And the primary cause, reason for doing that is that commercial developments, we really do want to bring in and provide huge incentives for because that helps, that benefit the city. The residential flats, the rooftops, they're good, but at some point there are impacts of people moving in too early, whereas in a, in a commercial development, you wouldn't see that. So we would only apply this to residential flats. We require lots to be done before the final plant was granted, that's a given, because we have to know where the lots are and make sure that the improvements are in the right place. We require that maintenance bonds be posted for landscapes, home, facility establishments, steep slope guarantees, the kinds of things that linger on after they're completed, we need maintenance guarantees for, okay? Longer terms. We make sure that those are established before we allow people to move in. And then we require a notice on the plant that occupancy is not granted until all the structures completed and the city satisfaction. That is a heads up to people buying lots in these developments that, by the way, you can't move in until it's all done, okay? So they're not taken by surprise. So that would be an element we would have to have, I think, on our plan. And then this element here, in talking today with Troy, I think we can get rid of this. I'm going to ignore it for right now. You can read it in your notes if you'd like. But the final part here that I'd like to draw your attention to is that partial bond release effort that we have to go through every time you ask for partial bond releases. And this happens not so infrequently, where people come, developers come to us and say, hey, we'd like you to release the sidewalks, the roads, the water, the sewer. And we get out there and not all done. So we spend a lot of time and effort checking it, and it's not finished, okay? So what we'd like to do is maybe recruit some of that time and effort on our plant and encourage them to get it all done and then just have one big inspection at the end as opposed to a bunch of little ones that may not get done on the way through. So we're, we're suggesting, whoops, that let's go ahead and charge 3% against what they're asked to release, right? In terms of the facilities, if they're going to do a partial bond release. They don't have to. And there's no charge if they wait till the end to do one big inspection, but if they want to go through bit by bit by bit, or you would like to charge them something for that, setting that number of 3% as a reasonable cost could be, could be lower, okay? So that's the idea. So instead of going through and having a bonding process that says, hey, you got to get this done, this done, this done before this point, or this done, this done, this done, and you have people living up there, non-precious facilities, right? With slopes that may not be done, and stormwater facilities are not quite complete, they're not quite operating, they got to get it all done before they have occupancy. That's the Pasco option. I bring that to you as an alternative to what we talked about before. The other exhibit in your information there was the other approach that we had provided to you, so you can look at that and compare it. But question, are you folks interested at all in us pursuing that? You going to look at it, preparing something that you can look at?
Ms. Selby?
I have a question about why do you think we wouldn't need number five? Because that looks kind of important to me. That's the construction easement?
So I'm glad somebody read that. I put that in there because I was concerned, and the, the specific concern I have is if you're, if you're doing a plant, and let's say you have a steep slope, and that steep slope is on somebody's property and you're working slope is on somebody's property, and you're working on it, right? And you sell that, under this, under this scenario, you can sell those lots, and you can build on them, but as soon as you sell those lots, you don't own them anymore. So, if you're going to finish that slope and make sure it works right, you've got to go to the property owner, the person you just sold the lot to, get the permission back. So, I was being required that they give us some assurance and identify us if they didn't, that they've got that in their sales agreement, that they have construction reasons to allow them to actually go and finish the work on property that they sold to somebody else. That's the concept. And talking to Pasco, they said, you know what? We don't allow, we don't even bond anything, we don't financially guarantee it until we have slopes taken care of, any, any water issues are taken care of. So, any of those fundamental, basic issues that have to do with a little building, like slopes failing or, or flooding, have to be in place before they leave the financial guarantees.
Ms. Selby.
Um, well, so that's good. Um, I also have a question, though, about the, the hopefully rare instance where the developer sold, like, half the lots, and then they go bankrupt, and we have to call the bond and finish. And, um, so there's still maintenance for those, uh, steep slopes, that stormwater, et cetera, and, um, and potentially, uh, other types of construction. So, how would that be handled?
That would be handled under the original bond. We'd have to make the cost enough that we could recover the cost on, just for the improvement that also put on maintenance.
Well, what I'm concerned about the, the access.
Oh, the access.
Because it would be like, in that case, it would be the city would be needing construction access or maintenance access.
I see, realize, we can put, we can, we can go for this. This is something I had in there originally, and I decided, well, if they don't do it, maybe we don't need to do it, but, but I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, I think, I think that might be important.
Yeah.
Once again, and then Mr. Peterson.
So, my last, mostly comment is, um, I kind of like this idea, but I think you should make a really strong shield, so that instead of people coming to you to pressure you to get it all done, they would pressure the developer. Because that was my first thought, is, well, that way, the, the buyers are the ones going to be nagging the developer, not us.
Right.
But if they just shift nagging to us, that isn't going to help a whole lot. They need to nag the developer.
This is one of the reasons why I didn't originally recommend this, but if you have any ideas on what a shield looks like, I would be open to it. Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
So, originally, and please correct me if I'm wrong, originally, I, we were looking at a twenty percent, twenty-five percent cash deposit outside of a bond?
Well, what we don't really do right now is a hundred twenty-five percent financial guarantee. What we do is the hundred percent financial guarantee plus twenty-five percent. That was its original concept. Right now, we're just a hundred twenty-five percent. Under this, it would still be a hundred twenty-five.
That's the status quo, then, is to stay at the one, you know, the one twenty-five.
No change.
Um, you've mentioned several times about people moving into residences that, where the streets are not completed, or, or whatever. Um, I didn't, originally, that was not one of your issues, it was more a case of things that were not completed, as far as weeds and piles of dirt, and, and, so, people moving in before it's completed is an issue?
It hasn't been thus far, but under our current structure, it could be. And what we have had is stormwater facilities that are not completely functioning in advance. So, that's a concern.
Yeah. Well, I, last thing, the carve-out for commercial, I understand those are special, special cases, and, uh, I, yeah, I appreciate that, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Westell?
Well, yeah, once I had argued, too, that as in this state, since we're so limited on incentives to get commercial development, truly, they're the only ones that, uh, really keep the lights on, because they also pay sales tax, uh, we need, we need to look at any way possible to incentivize commercial office and light industrial type developments.
Other questions for Mr. Gordon? Ms. Selby.
Well, I just have a comment, because he was saying, you know, should we, they, um, look further at this? I think that's a good idea, personally.
Hmm, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
One more thing, franchise utilities, response time.
Yes, yeah. Apologies for having so much on there, but I have a captive audience, so I can make a better.
Just remember.
You work for them.
That's true. Um, so, I'll make this really brief. We currently have, um, a franchise utility code that we adopted in June fifteenth of two thousand seventeen. Um, we specifically put in their requirement at, our franchise utilities, of which we have eight, plus basic disposal, which is not, because it's not a utility, but it's, they still sign off on our plans. Um, we give them a ten-day window, when somebody gets done with a set of plans, to respond to that engineer and, and sign the plans, so everybody's on the same page, so everybody knows where all the facilities are going, everybody understands. We give them ten days, but we're finding that ten days may not be, may be too long. So, when somebody gets almost to the end of their development process, I'm ready to sign plans, I tell them, make sure utilities are signed. Ten days is a longer time, that's two weeks, okay? We're finding our utilities are really pretty responsive, they do a good job. Um, there have been a few misunderstandings, been not a lot, in the last ten years, this works pretty well. What we'd like to do is cut that ten days to five days, tell them they have, they have to sign off on plans that are brought to them by the developer or by us within five days, or they can request more time, okay? But we like to make sure that they know they have five days, and that speeds up the development process a little bit. So, we have one exception to that, in terms of physically signing off on those plans, just to remove any question about who's got what where, and that is in the case of franchises that are kind of disconnected from our area, that don't really provide actual services like knowing that, that don't have anybody here. So, there's a low risk there, so we've said, in those cases, at our discretion, you can say, we'll take an email, you don't have to sign with us. So, this is just a technical issue on the franchise utility, we're just decreasing the time to five days, and want to see if you're open to that. We'll bring you a change in code if that's something that looks okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thanks.
There's nothing like having a sad duty. Uh, Mr. Dickerson's memorial service is February twenty-third at four P M at the Village Church. The, uh, I, I think it's, you know, we, we did pass a-
What time was that?
Four P M. Uh, the, I, I, there is a card circular, I think you all have a chance to, to sign that. Um, the, I, I think it's important to memorialize Larry's eighteen years of service to this city, and I'm trying to figure out, uh, how long he was, he was a council, uh, council member in Golden Dale, and Lisa's going to work on that for me. So, you know, where there's, while there's no, there's no particular rush in doing something, I'd like you all to think about what we should do as a city for some kind of permanent memorial to Larry's service.
I think certainly.
So, you know, there's, there's no, there's certainly no hurry now.
I certainly think that we ought to make sure at the memorial, there's flowers from this, from this council, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to do something a little more prominent.
Yes, yes.
Uh, that's all, that's the sec, he's the second longest-serving city council member in the city, behind Ms. Nyad. Uh, and I think it's, uh, I think it's particularly appropriate to, to do something like that since his death occurred while he was serving on the council. So, think about that among yourselves, uh, there's a variety of things that we could do, but I would like to do something to memorialize Larry's service. We'll, uh, we'll send something around to, to take a look at, at flowers, or, and I haven't talked with, uh, with his sister or his wife yet, so I don't know exactly what they would like as far as the, as far as the memorial service, we can look at flowers or something else that goes along with that. But, I believe that that's, I believe that that's important to do that. Uh, we will start the process of filling his, I sent, I sent you all the, in an email, the, the resolution that guides us on how we, uh, how we fill those positions. We'll start advertising his position on February twenty-second, that's a Friday. Uh, we kind of fenced ourselves in with fourteen, fourteen days of, within fourteen days to start to fill. Uh, I'll take a look at that, I think, I, I would prefer not to do that before the memorial service, but here we are. Uh, we'll advertise that for a period of three weeks, covering, covering that, that will, that'll come back, those applications and questionnaires come back to Lisa, who'll make sure that, A, they're a resident of over a year, and that they're a voter. Uh, we'll, we'll go through that process, get those to you, the, the application and the questionnaires, and then, uh, I think it's, which meeting are we talking about presenting them?
Twenty-sixth of March.
Yeah, March, having, having interviews on March twenty-sixth, uh, and, uh, looking for your opinion on, on the, the appropriateness of the interviews that, that you have applied to fill the council position. Um, and their, their first meeting would be the workshop in April, and their first, their first meeting would be, uh, the second, uh, in April.
I've gone there last week, yeah.
So, we'll, uh, we will get all those to you and, uh, go from there. Any, any questions?
If, if you need to know any other things, Steve Dickerson is a good one to, to, to contact you, and he used to be on our council, too, Steve, and he, he's, he would be able to tell you anything that you would need to know in, in memorializing.
I've been, I've been asked to have a, to give a short presentation at the memorial service, I've run that past the Dickersons to make sure I'm not saying anything I shouldn't be saying.